I'd like to begin the May 13th meeting of the Hillsborough Board of Education. In accordance with the State Sunshine Law of New Jersey, adequate notice of this meeting of the Hillsborough Township Board of Education was provided on May 9th, 2019, to the Hillsborough Beacon and the Courier-News. May I have a roll call, please?
Sure. Mr. Gillette?
Here.
Dr. Harris?
Here.
Ms. Eldridge Howard?
Here.
Ms. Maroon?
Here.
Mr. Pulsifer?
Here.
Dr. Sasan?
Here.
Ms. Stats?
Here.
Mr. Hio?
Here.
And Ms. Haas?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Great. We'll be going into executive session. I will read the motion to go into executive session. Whereas the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 of the laws of 1975, provides that a public body may exclude the public from that portion of a meeting of which the public body discusses certain matters for which confidentiality is required, as permitted in Section B of that act, resolved by the Board of Education of the Township of Hillsborough and the County of Somerset and State of New Jersey as follows: One, the matters to be discussed are negotiations with Hillsborough Township; and two, the matters discussed in executive session shall be disclosed to the public when the need for confidentiality no longer exists. May I have a motion and second to go into closed session?
So moved.
Thank you, Lorraine.
Second.
Chris, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, we're off to executive session. We'll be back out at 7:30. Okay. Okay. We're back, we're back from executive session. Thank you all for your patience. May I have a roll call, please?
Sure. Mr. Gillette?
Here.
Dr. Harris?
Here.
Ms. Eldridge Howard?
Here.
Ms. Maroon?
Here.
Mr. Pulsifer?
Here.
Dr. Sasan?
Here.
Ms. Stats?
Here.
Mr. Hio?
Here.
And Ms. Haas?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you very much. Will all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the law of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, united. With liberty and justice for all.
We're under control.
So, I would like to recognize that we received several pieces of correspondence since our last meeting, and we have some minutes to approve. First are the minutes of our regular meeting held on April 29th. May I have a motion and second, please?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any questions or comments on the minutes?
I had a small amendment to the minutes for the voting record of 13.5.
Okay, we have that. Thank you. Thank you for catching that. As amended, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, moving right along to our anxious people in the audience. Superintendent will introduce our spotlight on students.
Thank you, Madam President. Each month, we try to spend some time spotlighting the great things that are going on throughout the district. Tonight, we're going to hear from some of our folks at the high school, as well as our students at HES. So, we'll begin with HES, with our building principal there. Please welcome to the podium, Ms. Sue Eckstein.
Good evening, Dr. Schiff, Madam President, Haas, and members of the board. It is my honor to introduce you to tonight's student spotlight presenters. Up first, we will have Ms. Valerie Muldoon and her 4th grade students, who are going to talk to you about what they learned from the New Jersey State Bar Foundation's Law Fair for 3rd through 6th graders. Their experiences focused on the importance of civics, understanding the law and the rights that people have to redress wrongs through the court system, and how trial works. This is an extension of the 4th grade Curriculum's unit on the three branches of government and the United States judicial system. To give you all the details, up first will be Mrs. Muldoon and her incredible 4th graders. Followed by that, we will have a brief video from the entire 4th grade class, created with the assistance of Mrs. Thompson and Ms. Mandl, with a focus on the development of the whole child. We all know that academics and learning are critical as students move through school, but the only way to be a truly successful and happy person is, when they're learning, make sure that the students are healthy, happy, and confident. The importance of social emotional development cannot be understated, and here is just one example of what we are doing at Hillsborough Elementary School to help students become their best versions of themselves. I am honored to introduce Mrs. Muldoon, followed then by Ms. Thompson and Ms. Mandl. Mrs. Muldoon?
Thank you, Ms. Eckstein. Good evening, everyone. I've been teaching 4th grade at Hillsborough Elementary for 18 years now, and at the beginning of this school year, Ms. Eckstein asked me if I wanted to attend a workshop on how to put on a mock trial for elementary school. Sounded a little daunting, but it was presented by the New Jersey State Bar Association, and I was eager to attend. During, during our intervention and enrichment time, my class's focus was on the enrichment component. This was accomplished by learning about our legal system, specifically putting on a mock trial. Students broke into groups to create original cases. They wrote their cases based on eight requirements, and I believe if you, yeah, this was the background on the state bar, and these were the eight requirements: the facts, issues, witnesses for each side, witness statements, instructions for the jury, sub-issues, concepts, and the law. They really delved very deeply into this. Additionally, they studied legal terms, which we went over with them, and each group decided if their case was criminal or civil action. Finally, they presented their cases to the class and voted on which one would be scripted for tonight. The winning case is being presented, the case of the spoiled coffee, a civil, excuse me, spilled coffee, a civil action. This project may have inspired future lawyers, judges, or even Supreme Court justices. The students presenting tonight are Midora Joshi, Omkar Baradwa, Juliana Eckhart, Brianna Gibson, Jordan Marini, Kresha Patel, Priscilla Chi, Ruby Hamid, and Arya Gupta. Without further ado...
All rise for the Honorable Judge Joshi. You will now hear the case of spilled coffee.
Good day, ladies and gentlemen of the jury. Thank you for coming today. Your job is very important. Both sides of the case care a lot about the result of the trial. Your job is to listen to all the evidence without forming an opinion. After you've listened to all the evidence, it's your job to deliberate and reach a verdict. The trial will begin with opening statements. Remember, the statements aren't evidence for you to consider. These are just opportunities for both attorneys to explain what evidence they'll be presenting. Would the plaintiff's lawyer please make her opening statement?
Ladies and gentlemen of the jury, I am sure that after hearing from today's witnesses, it will be clear to you that the negligence of an employee at Miracle Coffee Experience caused little Bernie Fingers injuries, and they should be responsible for reimbursing her $500 medical bills.
Would the defendant's lawyer please make her opening statement to the jury?
Ladies and gentlemen of the jury, I intend to prove that my client, the Miracle Coffee Experience, did not cause Betty Fingers to spill her coffee on the morning of Monday, November 13th, 2017. In fact, I intend to prove that Betty positioned her stroller too close to the counter, and as a result, her son was burned.
The plaintiff's lawyer may call her first witness.
I, I call Betty Fingers to the stand.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Betty, please tell us what happened.
My name is Betty Fingers, and I went to Miracle Coffee Experience on the morning of Monday, November 13th, 2017, with my infant son Bernie to get a cup of coffee. An employee named Coco Beans came and took my order. I ordered a regular coffee, and as I waited, I moved the stroller back and forth so that Bernie could sleep. When my coffee was ready, as I grabbed it, a woman yelled to Coco. She dropped it before I could safely grab it in my hands, and my son was burned badly. My son is now scarred with second-degree burns, and the least Miracle Coffee Experience can do is pay for my son's medical expenses. Thank you, Betty. Now, I'm just gonna ask you a few questions. Has your son have ever had any major injuries? No, this was the first. Okay. Do you go to Miracle Coffee Experience often? Yes, every Monday.
Defense, do you want to cross-examine the witness?
Yes, your honor. Mrs. Fingers, have you ever seen anything like this happen at Miracle Coffee Experience before?
No.
Will you ever go to Miracle Coffee Experience again?
Not until they pay the medical bills to heal Bernie.
Thank you. I have no further questions.
Plaintiff's lawyer, do you have any further questions?
No, your honor.
Then call your next witness.
I call Stanley Stocker to the stand.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Sir, please tell us what happened.
My name is Stanley Stocker, and I was, I went to Miracle Coffee Experience on Monday, November 13th, 2017. I ordered my usual Frappuccino and sat down. A couple minutes later, a mother arrived with her baby. I saw her talk to an employee in wait. Later, the same employee came out and handed her, the, um, her, the mother her coffee. But just then, a woman came out of a door and screamed, "Coco, come here right now." It was loud, and the coffee dropped on this baby boy before the mom even had it. The baby and the mom screamed, and the worker looked very guilty.
Thank you, Mr. Stocker. The plaintiff rests, your honor.
The defense lawyer may call her first witness.
I call Violet Volium to the stand.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please tell us what happened.
My name is Violet Volium, and I am the manager of the Miracle Coffee Experience. On Monday morning, November 13th, 2017, I was at work. I got a delivery that Coco signed for, and I needed to ask her a few questions. As I walked out of my office, I saw the, I saw a woman getting coffee, and before I even called out to Coco, the mother dropped her coffee on a boy in a stroller that seemed very close to the counter. She said that I screamed, and that scared her, so she dropped the coffee. To my recollection, I didn't say a word before the coffee was dropped. I thought to myself, why would she grab the hot coffee over her son's head?
Thank you, Violet. Your honor, I will now call my next witness, Coco Beans, to the stand.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please tell us what happened.
I have worked for Miracle Coffee Experience for almost a year. On the morning of Monday, November 13th, 2017, a lady came to Miracle Coffee Experience with her baby. I went to take her order, and she asked for a hot coffee. I asked her what her name was, and she said it was Betty Fingers. When the coffee was ready, I brought it out to her. She took it from me, and right then, my boss said, "Coco, come here right now." Mrs. Fingers dropped the hot coffee on her son's arm. I thought that Mrs. Fingers had the coffee securely in her hand before my boss called for me, but in fact, she didn't, and as a result, it dropped onto her son, who strolled way too close to the counter.
How close do you think the stroller was to the counter?
It was so close that she had to reach over her son to get the coffee.
Did you say anything to Mrs. Fingers about the positioning of her stroller?
Yes, but she didn't think it was a problem.
Thank you, Ms. Beans.
Plaintiff's lawyer, do you want to cross-examine?
No, your honor.
Okay, thank you. Members of the jury, it's now your job to decide if Betty Fingers, the plaintiff, proved by a preponderance of evidence that Miracle Coffee Experience was negligent and therefore responsible for Bernie Fingers' injury and paying for his medical bills.
The jury will now meet to deliberate. Raise your hand if you think Betty Fingers was responsible for the case of the spilled coffee. Raise your hand if you think Miracle Coffee Experience was, was responsible for the, for the case of the spilled coffee.
Our class thought that Betty Fingers was responsible by the preponderance of evidence for the case of the spilled coffee.
Some sophisticated vocabulary in there. I just want to say that they wrote and created this entire script and scenario all by themselves. So, they did a great job.
Let's give them another hand. They did a nice job. Very impressive. And now I know that there's a video that we have queued up, ready to go.
And now, Mrs. Thompson and Ms. Mandl.
As we all know, academics are important, but the social and emotional health of students is a critical part of a well-rounded education. The 4th grade team at Hillsborough Elementary School want our students to make the transition to Otten Road feeling self-confident and comfortable in their own skin. As part of our intervention and enrichment time, we spent time discussing the importance of loving yourself regardless of shortcomings or insecurities. We showed the lyric video to "This Is Me" from the movie The Greatest Showman and analyzed the meaning behind the song lyrics. Students then spent time brainstorming a word or phrase to describe themselves and wrote it on a poster. With the help of our amazing school counselor, Ms. Mandl, we were able to turn this lesson into an uplifting video to show our students and all the students and staff of the Hillsborough Township Public Schools that each one of them should embrace exactly who they are.
I am not a stranger to the dark. Hide away, they say, 'cause we don't want your broken parts. I've learned to be ashamed of all my scars. Run away, they say, no one will love you as you are. But I won't let them break me down to dust. I know that there's a place for us, for we are glorious. When the sharpest words wanna cut me down, I'm gonna send a flood, gonna drown them out. I am brave, I am bruised, I am who I'm meant to be. This is me. Look out, 'cause here I come. And I'm marching on to the beat I drum. I'm not scared till you see, I make no apologies. This is me. I love my foot, it's my skin. Well, fire away, 'cause today I won't let the street see it. See, I'm rising through the barricades, breathing for the sun. We are warriors, that's what we are. Won't let them break me down to dust. I know that there's a place for us, for we are glorious. When the sharpest words wanna cut me down, I'm gonna send a flood, gonna drown them out. I am brave, I am bruised, I am bruised, I am who I'm meant to be. This is me. Look out, 'cause here I come. And I'm marching on to the beat I drum. I'm not scared till you see, I make no apologies. This is me. When the sharpest words wanna cut me down, I'm gonna send a flood, gonna drown them out. This is brave, this is bruised, this is who I'm meant to be. This is me. Look out, 'cause here I come. And I'm marching on to the beat I drum. I make no apologies. This is me. Won't let them break me down to dust. I know that there's a place for us, for we are glorious. When the sharpest words wanna cut me down, I'm gonna send a flood, gonna drown them out. I am brave, I am bruised, I am bruised, I am who I'm meant to be. This is me.
Let's please give them a round of applause. Wonderful. Highlighting what makes us all special. I learned about plaintiffs and defense counsel, and now what, what makes us all very special. Thank you so much. We're gonna ask our parents and our students from HES just to hang out just for a couple more minutes. We have another brief presentation, and then the board is going to go into recess to say thank you and to meet you personally. Now, we're going to share some wonderful things that are going on at our high school, and at the podium right now is the principal of Hillsborough High School, Ms. Karen Bringer. Please welcome her.
Good evening, Dr. Schiff and members of the board. I reached out to the high school staff, asking for people who are interested in coming out to be a part of this May presentation. It's a busy time of the year, and I wasn't sure what sort of a response I was going to get, but I got an overwhelming response. Such an overwhelming response, as a matter of fact, that I couldn't possibly bring everybody tonight. But what I did want to do is take a minute just to share a couple of bits of news from the people who were interested in joining us this evening. So, first, in April, the HHS debate team closed out a very successful year by winning a Best Delegation Award at Rutgers Model Congress. The team was represented by a predominantly underclass group of students, boding extremely well for the future of HHS Debate. Earlier in the year, HHS Debate won a Best Delegation Award at NYU's Empire Model United Nations Conference, and won a large number of individual awards at the Mexico International Model United Nations Conference. The ice hockey program finished 21, 7, and 1, its best-ever record in the history of the sport at Hillsborough High School. Ranked first in the Public A State Tournament, they made it all the way to the state final at the Prudential Center on March 4th. Although they did lose their only game of the season that night, they have also demonstrated that they truly are winners. By holding a charity game for our student Arjun Jain, who was diagnosed with leukemia, the team presented Arjun with signed pucks, a jersey with his name, and other donations throughout the year. And every year, the high school cheerleading team chooses a charity to raise funds and donate to during the Homecoming Shirt fundraiser. This year, the cheerleaders were given the opportunity to personally donate $2,000 to the Ronald McDonald House in New Brunswick. While touring the facility, they were all touched by the safe and warm environment that was provided to the families of the sick children who stay there. By seeing the fruits of their efforts, the cheerleaders are all left very excited to continue fundraising for charities in future years. And then, the advanced baking students open Raiders Sweets and Treats Bake Shop once a month to bring their superior baked goods to the staff of HHS. In advance of each bake shop, the students work hard at perfecting their products and even creating innovative new baked goods. This teaches the students important skills in production, baking, and in running a business. Now, these amazing groups are the ones that could not be here tonight, but it's now my absolute pleasure to introduce the groups that could be here. But before I do, I have to say, I don't know how Principal Eckstein deals with the unbearable cuteness of all of you HES students, and how she can stand being as proud of you as I know that she is tonight, and I'm equally as proud of the grown-up version of you guys who are here to present this, this evening. So, up first is going to be Push and Rebel, led by Mrs. Rebecca Balaguer, followed by Pride, led by Mrs. Beth Moran, and then ending with Yearbook, led by Mrs. Michelle Wetzel. Mrs. Balaguer.
Hi, I'm Rebecca Balaguer. I'm one of the student assistance counselors at HHS. I'm also the advisor for the Push Rebel Club. So, Push Rebel stands for Peers Using Student Help and Reaching Everyone by Exposing Lies. And our students work on a number of different activities and do outreach. So, here to speak on our behalf are two of my board members, Jared Handelman and Kristin Delkor.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Kristin Delkor, and I'm a board member of Push Rebel. We're a club that provides a sense of freedom and community. Our club represents living, drug- and alcohol-free lifestyles. In other words, staying healthy and steering students and ourselves away from drugs and alcohol. We meet every other Tuesday to discuss new ideas and to decide what activities to plan for either the next meeting or special events in the community. We help coordinate and participate in Red Ribbon Week activities, such as announcements, lunch activities, and at the high school football game. This year, we organized a family movie night for, for the elementary school kids.
Also, as a part of our club, we coordinate with Otten Road Intermediate School, in which we provide cross-age teaching to the 5th and 6th graders about tobacco, alcohol, and other drugs. We do this by creating workstations, and this year, we were sure to address vaping, as we know it's a serious concern. Our stations included a Fatal Vision Obstacle Course, in which it gives the students a sense of how it would affect them, like, under the influence of any of these components, like drugs and alcohol, like, through hand-eye coordination and how it would affect their everyday lives. We also do a Kahoot game, in which this is the more informative component, in which we teach them new things that they probably don't learn in their health class. And then, we also do a music lyric station, in which we tell the students to identify the certain drug and alcohol references in pop culture. A post-survey at the end of each of our trips indicated over 90% of, 98% of the students participating in these activities found them to be informative. As a club, we find these trips very rewarding, because we try to influence the students to say drug and alcohol-free, and hopefully leave the students with something to think about. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Beth Moran, and I'm a school counselor at Hillsborough High School, and I'm also the advisor of Pride. And Pride stands for People Respecting Individual Differences Every Day. We're a club that supports respect and tolerance, and I'd like to introduce two of our members, Ainsley Harkin and Julia LaPallese, who will talk about our big project for the year.
Hi, I'm Ainsley Harkin. I'm a freshman at the high school, and I've done Pride since middle school.
Hi, I'm Julia LaPallese. I'm a junior at the high school, and I started Pride as a freshman, so this is my third year in the club.
So, we go in...
So first of all, we would like to thank you all for watching the mock trial. We worked really hard on it. We would also like to give a big thanks to our teacher, Mrs. Muldoon, who helped us create this trial. We wouldn't be here today without her.
While we are here, we would like to voice our opinion on the changes coming to our school next year. We learned that our budget, that the budget cuts will affect our favorite program, REACH.
It makes us very disappointed that the first and second graders in all the elementary schools in Hillsborough will not have, be having the opportunity to have REACH. They will miss out on all those fun and unique activities that helped us expand our creative minds. This is because Mrs. Dano, our REACH teacher, is going to have, to teach at two schools next year.
Also, our computer teacher, Mrs. Z, will be teaching at three different schools next year. That means not one school, um, that means one, not one school will have a computer teacher that is just for their school. What if one school needs the computer teacher? What about NJ S L A testing? We all need Mrs. Zamirodian and her computer skills.
Lastly, many classroom, many classroom teachers are getting cut from the schools. Some from our school are Ms. Salazar, Mr. Chermes, and from the office of the secretary, Mrs. Andreja.
We have started a petition and we have many followers. Each of, um, our followers wrote our name in the document we printed. We were the ones who started it.
We hope that what we say today will make a difference and that you can, that you take our opinions into consideration.
Thank you very much for your articulate comments. It's very nice to see students who support their schools and their teachers. Please have faith that things will be fine next year. We'll do everything we can to make it that way for you guys.
I was just given a petition with more than a hundred signatures. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Alexa Gibson and I am a student at Autton Road Intermediate School. And I also want to talk about, um, the referendum and what it's going to be doing to our fifth grade REACH program. So, I was a fifth grade REACH student last year and I always looked forward to that period four REACH. I even pulled through period three gym to go to period four REACH because, like, there are so many fun projects we did and I just looked forward to it more than any of my other classes. And I really think it's a good opportunity, um, for fifth grade students. And I really, and, um, I heard that one of my favorite teachers from fifth grade, Mrs. Seller, is getting, is getting cut and, and the REACH, and so, and with it, the fifth grade REACH program. And, and now, and now I'm going to talk a little bit about REACH this year. So, um, fifth grade REACH, I believe it's going to turn into something like sixth grade REACH this year, where the, where the pod social studies teacher also teaches REACH. So, it's just, it's kind of like not the same because it's the same teacher that's teaching all of the, um, like, all the students in the pod. And I liked going to one classroom that not everybody went to and she got all of the REACH, REACH students in the school rather than just in one pod. And also, Mrs. Seller, the fifth grade REACH teacher, has, or has earned Teacher of the Year in, I think, last year. And I really don't think, uh, you should, they should cut a teacher that recently won an award because that's a pretty big accomplishment for her. And I'm worried, and, um, I really hope that future REACH students will get the same opportunities that I got at, as the last class of REACH, as it is now, in 2018. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Are there any other young people here who would like to make any comments? Okay, then we will go on with our agenda. Oh, okay. Okay. Um, okay, so we move on to committee reports at this time. Would you like to start with education?
Certainly. Um, the education committee met, um, on May ninth. Different glasses, May sixth. Um, and, uh, we had, uh, a much shorter meeting than we have had lately. Um, we approved four novels. They are on the board agenda, uh, tonight. We recommended them for full board approval. Those are all middle school, um, summer read, uh, books. And then we also approved several, or recommended several curricula for approval tonight. REACH grades one through four, as well as social studies, um, as those were listed on the agenda. Um, we had a brief discussion on exemption from finals for seniors. Um, that is being discussed, uh, by Lisa and her team. And, um, they're going to report back to the education committee after they, they hear back. So the, the question there was, um, as it is now, if you get a ninety or above third or fourth quarter, uh, third and fourth quarter, then you're exempt from finals as a senior. Um, there was an article written in The Voice, which I happened to see, that was recommending that if you had a ninety average among those two quarters, rather than, uh, a ninety minimum those two quarters, that seniors be exempt. And so that's the discussion that's happening now about, um, what's in the handbook, how it's being actually put into practice and making sure that we have consistent following of, of whatever is decided upon. Uh, we had another discussion about, um, the Latin program. Our current Latin teacher, uh, has announced his retirement. That's on the board agenda tonight for, um, for us to, uh, accept his retirement. So, we discussed several options for continuation of the Latin program. And, uh, that was it. Judy?
Yes.
That's it. Greg?
Oh, oh, you're going to me next? All right. Um, operations committee met on May eighth. Uh, we had several items on the agenda, but I'll try to be brief. Um, uh, we discussed, uh, once again, something we discussed for many years now, over the years, uh, bringing our custodial management, um, in-house. Right now, we contract for custodial management services. Um, so we had some discussion about that. Um, and I, the, um, at this time, the, uh, cost of services and the level of service we're receiving make it advantageous for us, finally, after about five or six years of talking about this, to go ahead and, uh, bring the management for custodial services in-house. This would require hiring a director of, um, buildings and grounds and an assistant and, um, procuring all of the, um, paper goods and other supplies and equipment ourselves. Um, we actually, uh, had an analysis, um, on this done by, um, our business administrator. And our analysis shows that we will actually save about $26,000 by, uh, bringing this in-house. So we're going to recommend to, uh, Dr. Schiff that he advertise for the position of Director of Buildings and Grounds. Once that position is, um, secured, then that person will help us find an assistant. Uh, okay, so, next item we talked about is, um, we had a bid for waste disposal. Uh, we had a bid from Premier of 154,000. I'm sorry, we had a, we have a current contract of 154,000. Uh, the bid, we had a bid from only one vendor, Premier, for 150,000. So we're accepting that bid. We're, we're pleased with the Premier services and the bid came in lower than they were paying now. So we're, uh, recommending to the board that we accept that, uh, bid. And it's on tonight's agenda. Uh, we had a discussion on, uh, courtesy busing and what we're going to do about that for next school year. We asked a lot of questions. Um, Ms. Bennett was unavailable, uh, but she'll be back at a future operations committee meeting to give us details about that and will report to the board. Uh, we discussed, um, a, a future referendum for, specifically for the maintenance, um, issues and upgrades and, and projects that were identified in both the Aramark report from, or I guess about a year ago, and also by our, subsequently by our other items identified by our architect. We had our, uh, bond counsel, Robbie Akimpori from Phoenix Advisors was at the meeting with us, uh, to talk to us about that. We have, uh, nothing to announce on that yet, but we're starting to think about a, a referendum specifically for the maintenance, um, items that were outlined in the Aramark report from a year ago. Uh, we had discussion about the, um, let's see, we go down a little bit. Uh, we had discussion about, um, a proposed, um, because we're attached ordinance, uh, on, uh, regarding residential building construction. And Mr. Mahmood is going to, um, prepare a, not a reply to that, but some information about that for the township committee uh, about whether or not our schools are now over the functional capacity and what additional enrollments might do to our schools. So Mr. Mahmood is working with our demographer to prepare a report that can be provided to township committee about that. Let's see, uh, we also had discussion about, um, the effect that the, um, new regulation following our, uh, updated policy on facilities usage, what, um, what effect that would have on specifically the Hillsborough Township Recreation Summer Camp. Um, out of that long discussion, we, uh, we proposed to meet tonight in executive session. Just discuss that, which we did. That's all I'm going to say about that, correct?
Okay.
Okay. Um, yeah, and so we, we did that. We also, um, and that was it, actually. So, thank you. I hope that was brief enough, sorry.
That was a very good meeting, as well as report. Chris, HR?
Yes, HR committee met on May sixth also. Uh, we started with a discussion of non-renewals, um, as in, for 2019, 2020, as impacted by the budget cuts. Uh, as part of that discussion, Dr. Schiff, uh, helped us understand how, uh, seniority and certification, uh, requirements would help define how the, the bumping would occur and, and what the actual cuts were. Um, as part of that also, we talked about the fact that while the, the bumping may look like it impacted some schools more than others, those schools didn't lose more positions. Uh, it was just a matter of who, uh, who would eventually get bumped that made some of the schools look like they were getting hit worse. We also discussed administrative vacancies. Um, as Greg mentioned, we, we discussed, um, the Director of Buildings and Grounds and Assistant Director from the HR perspective of how, how to manage those positions. Uh, we also talked about filling the position of Director of Human Resources, which is currently vacant, uh, and for Triangle Elementary Principal. And lastly, we talked about the job fair that Dr. Schiff has been coordinating with superintendents across the district. And actually, uh, I should back up from that. When we had first talked about this, Dr. Schiff was targeting, uh, districts and superintendents, uh, in the county. Um, it has actually gone wider than that. We have a number of districts outside of, uh, some, excuse me, outside of Somerset County who will also be participating. This is all in an effort to try and assist, uh, teachers who are impacted by the budget, uh, cuts with finding new, uh, new placements. And we're hoping for, uh, successful placement for everybody participating there. And that was our meeting. Thanks.
Thank you very much, Chris. Uh, Jane, would like to give a report on the municipal alliance.
Thank you. Uh, over a hundred people attached, attended, uh, program of the, uh, filming of the documentary Angst last Thursday. The film itself and the Q and A afterwards reveal true life stories about anxiety among children, as well as practical suggestions. Hope for tomorrow is an event to be held-
Be held on May thirty-first?
From six, from six to eight P M. at the Woods Road Bar House. It supports and raises awareness for social, emotional, and mental health. New mental health first aid training will be held on Saturday, June fifteenth and Saturday, June twenty-second from nine to one. It is free, no registration is required. And just, so you know, the municipal alliance is dedicated to raising support for substance abuse awareness and education. And the next meeting will be held on Friday, June fourteenth at nine A M. That's like that, June fourteenth.
Thank you very much. Jean, you wanted to give an NJ S B A report?
Um, yes, so thank you. Um, so this, actually, this past Saturday, there was a meeting of the Legislative and Finance Committee, of which I'm members of both. And, um, just really briefly, I wanted to kind of let you know, um, we had a speaker, Judge Gary Stein, of the New Jersey Coalition for Diverse and Inclusive Schools. And he let us know about the, um, the lawsuit, actually, against the state of New Jersey. You may be, I was, this was actually news to me. Um, it was filed last year on the sixty-fourth anniversary of Brown versus Board of Education. And basically, um, it's suing the state of New Jersey, um, basically saying that the New Jersey state constitution prohibits racial segregation in public schools, but because of the way New Jersey zones and the New Jersey statute that requires kids to go to the schools where they live, New Jersey is the sixth most segregated state in the country. So I was surprised to learn that. And they, um, this Friday, I believe, is the sixty-fifth anniversary of Brown versus Board of Education. Um, another update is this Thursday, May sixteenth. Um, there will be Legislative Day, which all school board members are welcome to attend. It'll be down at the Trenton War Memorial. And Carrie, Carrie, not Corey, Carrie Booker, the, um, governor's education advisor, will speak. And there will also be panelists from the, um, Assembly Education Committee and Senate Higher Education Committee that will be in attendance. And then next, on Saturday, May eighteenth, is the delegate assembly. And that's what I wanted to kind of talk to, or kind of just give a brief update. I don't think this is controversial, but I am the delegate for this board. The delegate assembly will consider a resolution by the Waymouth Board of Education that's asking NJ S B A to adopt policy, um, in, in multiple parts. But basically, they want to, it's kind of like what we had talked about at an earlier meeting. They want NJ S B A to adopt policy that assists all districts in maintaining state aid at pre-S two levels. That's part one. Part two is that the school funding formula should address exceptional circumstances. And their exceptional circumstances are that a majority or substantial amount of their housing is manufactured housing, which is temporary housing. And so therefore, they, their tax basis is, um, a lot less. I believe twenty-five percent of their real estate is manufactured housing. Um, the third is that discrepancies between aggregate income and taxable property that the, that the state, sorry, NJ S B A should advocate for the state to ensure fair and equalized, um, state aid allocation. So, there was, um, basically how it works is the resolution subcommittee met to review the resolution. And their recommendation is, um, to adopt, I believe it's two additional policy, um, additions, which is the first is that NJ S B A believes in fair, equitable, and adequate allotment of state aid based upon most recent enrollment and financial data. The second is that NJ S B A believes states, the state's school funding formula should address the financial needs of districts in which exceptional circumstances involving the community's tax base prevent the calculation of a fair and accurate local contribution. And they are recommending that that resolution be accepted as amended. It's slightly different than what Waymouth had, um, presented. And then finally, they had recommended that the NJ S B A Finance Committee conduct a review, and this is where it would interest us, of the S F R A, particularly the data and methodology used to calculate a district's local fair share and report back to the November 2019 delegate assembly. So, and then finally, just one more thing and then we can talk about it if we'd like. Um, on Tuesday, May twenty-first, is the Somerset County, um, School Boards Association, which will be held as a joint meeting between Somerset and Hunterdon Counties at the Votek High School in Bridgewater. So, thank you.
Okay, and I would like to add to your report that on May twenty-first, at the Somerset County-Hunterdon, uh, joint, uh, School Board Association meeting, I will be receiving a certified board leader award. Um, after all these years, it recognizes sixty credits of classes, as well as at least five years of board leadership, as well as, God knows what else. But, uh, it's been a long haul-
Congratulations.
-of county meetings, at least three annual school board workshops, uh, various professional development programs and other responsibilities. And, uh, it's the highest level of individual certification in the board member academy. And I'm actually very proud of that. And I hope that everybody on the board will take seriously the training opportunities that are provided by the school board, um, uh, the New Jersey School Board Association, because it's good stuff. And, uh, I hope that any and all of you can come. It's free. And there's actually a nice dinner catered by the Somerset County Votek students in their, um, in their restaurant, so.
Congratulations, Judy. I'll be there.
Thanks. I took the test at the very last day that it was eligible to do that. But anyway, so that was my big announcement today. And I know that there are four of us going to Legislative Day. Um, if anybody else wants to go, there's room on the roof of the car. But I think that, you know, that's a nice turnout for Hillsborough. And we'll have a few things to tell our, our legislators and other people's legislators, which is something we don't always get to do.
Madam President, I, I do have something, uh, I would like to mention. Uh, today, this afternoon, and I won't have my report until the next meeting, but it was so exciting. I came back so excited about it. It was, uh, on special education.
Yeah.
And the idea is they had the father of the six-year-old that was killed at Sandy Hook. Uh, that was, he was the keynote speaker. And they talked about ways in which we could possibly save a million dollars under special ed. Well, I mean, there's so much information. I came back ecstatic about it. And I'll have the report for all of you next, next, at the next meeting.
It's so great. I particularly love seeing our new board members get all excited about our training opportunities. And it's good stuff. And, you know, anything that you, you learn could help us. So please feel free to share and, uh, we'll move on from there. Okay, did you have a further report?
No.
Okay, so you're good. Okay, so we move on to, uh, comments from the board and public about committee reports or items that are on the agenda. Uh, we very much welcome input from the public. There are two times during the board meeting that public is invited to speak. One time is right now that you can speak about any item that is listed on tonight's agenda before the board votes. Towards the end of the meeting, there's another port, public forum to address any topic. Before you make your comment, please state your name and address. There's a three-minute time limit per speaker. Please understand that our public forums are not structured as question-and-answer sessions, but rather are offered as opportunities to share your thoughts with the board. In instances where the board believes that there is a misunderstanding or inaccuracy, the board president or superintendent will address the comment. There may be times when a member of the public makes a comment or asks a question about personnel or hiring decisions. New Jersey statutes do not permit the board to discuss personnel issues in public session. With that, microphone is open.
Good evening, Board. Frank Delkor, Hillsborough Mayor. Um, I know that on, earlier on the agenda, there was correspondence from me uh, to the board about your recently enacted policy as it relates to the use of school facilities. Recognizing that you have a, have had a significant challenge over the last several months in dealing with your budget. Um, and, uh, I certainly don't envy the decisions that you've had to make. But I do quibble with the, with your process. Part of what we have done cooperatively for better than thirty years is run a summer camp program through our recreation program uh, that is held at a number of the schools here in Hillsborough. Um, and we try to run those camps at a value level to allow some of our more challenged families to participate and have, uh, essentially some daycare over the summer for their students while the parents may be, uh, off working. I understand you made a decision on your policy. Uh, you enacted a new policy. That's certainly your prerogative for the use of your school and your assets. Um, however, it's extremely disappointing that not a single member of this board, not one, bothered to have a single conversation with a member of the township committee or a liaison about the change in policy less than six weeks before our camps are about to begin, essentially trying to hold us hostage over about $130,000. We have tried to work cooperatively in the past. We don't always agree on things, but we do have, uh, communication to the appropriate people on your board if there's something that we know affects you. And certainly from a township committee's perspective, I would have accept, expected the same courtesy. And it's extremely disappointing that, uh, we weren't granted that courtesy. We were simply provided your policy, told, "Take it or leave it." And, um, uh, so, to be clear, as I stated in my letter, we have no authority to authorize the funding for that, uh, for that policy. We do not yet have our budget in place. So, um, we have a decision to make now. Uh, I know you talked about it in executive session. I'd be curious to know if there's something you could share on your policy or response to my letter. Uh, but, uh, from a township pers- perspective, uh, we'll need to make a decision as to what we do at the camps. And it's disappointing, uh, as to how this process has taken place and the potential impact to a number of Hillsborough families uh, because we simply couldn't have a basic dialogue about policy that you knew would have a material impact on, uh, programs that we run. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Alyssa Walters, thirty-three hundred West Camelback Road, Phoenix, Arizona.
Whoa, you've come a long way.
Well, I'm a local representative for Grand Canyon University. So that's why I'm here tonight. So I just wanted to tell you a little bit about our university. And, um, I am the local representative for Somerset and Mercer County. We have five people within the entire district that have inquired at our university. Um, one of them has graduated with a master's degree. Two of them are inquiring for doctoral degrees. And then the other ones are also inquiring about master's degree as well. We offer over a hundred fifty programs that are completely online, a hundred percent online. So I wanted to discuss the benefits of a potential partnership with Hillsborough School District. So with that partnership, we would offer a ten percent discount of tuition for all employees, twenty-five percent off tuition scholarship for master's programs in education, five percent off of tuition scholarship for all dependents of employees and parents of Grand Canyon University students, fifteen percent off of tuition for all paraprofessionals or any employee that's needing their initial certification at the bachelor level. We also offer free professional development for all staff. So that means having a partnership with Grand Canyon University, we would fly somebody out from our campus in Phoenix, Arizona and provide a free professional development for whatever school needs it and for whatever you need. We will provide that for you, free of charge. We also hold graduation celebrations for all graduates. So when a student does graduate at a school, we show up, we bring them a cake, we bring them balloons, we bring them all sorts of things and spoil them when they graduate. Also, we have coming up in July, Denise, this is my manager, Denise. Um, we have a fly-out coming up in July and we would like to invite some of you to come out. We fly you out to campus. Um, we show you pretty much what Grand Canyon University is all about. So if you're interested in that, I have information that I can give you, um, when everybody adjourns. So I also wanted to leave with letting you know that as a local representative, I do everything with my students from applications to financial aid, pretty much anything they need. The moment they sign up, I do everything with them and I'm with them until they graduate. So they have personal accountability as well. And being local, I can meet them wherever they need. Their homes, a Starbucks, whatever's convenient for them. We want to make sure that they're a hundred percent successful while they're going to school with us. We are regionally accredited as well, so I know that's very important when people are looking to go back to school. Um, so that's pretty much what I wanted to let you know about. And I have information that I can give you after this is completed.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
That'll be very helpful. Thank you.
Good evening. Shawna Guzzi, twenty-one Crestmont Drive. I also am a teacher at Hillsborough Elementary School. At one of the meetings, you spoke about, um, numbers, class size numbers. And you were saying through, at the earlier grades, kindergarten through second, you were going to keep them the same. I'm curious what the number is, the magic number, if you will.
Sure. We have a class size max procedure. So at, um, at kindergarten, uh, twenty-two. At first grade, twenty-two. At second grade, twenty-five.
Okay. Because last year, for example, at our school, as you know, um, has a lot of children coming in and out. We're a very transit school because we have a lot of apartments, townhouses, um, and condos. So the children are moving in and out. Uh, as you know, Corporal Langdon Way opens up last year. So we had a huge influx of students. So my, um, my classroom, for example, went up to twenty-five. Uh, twenty-three in September. We needed one more student, uh, in, by August first, I believe, to open another section. We needed one more student by August 1st, I believe, to open another section, and I got that student in September. My colleague also had 25 students in her classroom with two students who mainstreamed so at parts of the day. She actually had 27 kindergartners. So I'm just curious to find out, in the past, we have had the 20, the cap of 22. When our school or our classes filled up, the children had to go to another school for the year. And I know that's not ideal, but having 25 and 27 in a kindergarten classroom with the curriculum that we have, that we made a huge presentation on, really, something needs to be kind of thought about that because I know the second phase of Corporal Langdon Way is opening up, I believe, in October or November this coming year. So I suspect that's going to be an issue again for us. So just to keep that in mind.
I appreciate that. We're actually going to have to start looking at redistricting because Triangle is, as you know, smaller. HES is less predictable.
Correct.
And what we have done in the past is that if we have students that have breached that 22 in kindergarten and first grade going into the school year, rather than opening up another section in the middle of the year.
Right.
We'll add additional instructional assistance.
Right.
To that particular class. And, and I could talk with Sue about when, you know, when that occurred because there, our enrollment changes every single day.
Yes.
It's not, it's not a static thing. And in some parts of our community, HES being one of them, it is less predictable than some other areas. So Wood Fern and Triangle, lower, and we're going to need to start moving some things around there. We did have conversations at the dais about when we, if we built a new high school and we closed HES, that would be the appropriate time to do that kind of redistricting, large redistricting. That realistically, we're probably going to have to do more of that phasing in some redistricting sooner than that.
Yeah. And even a suggestion, I know.
Sure.
It just, even if you looked at our numbers in the summer, and once we hit even 20, and, you know, everybody had 20 students in the classroom, then you have eight more children that can easily move in and out and still have only 22 children in the classroom. That might be, for the schools that are more transit, that ha, you know, the neighborhood schools are different. People stay in the homes until the children are a little bit older usually. But our school is very different, and we're always, it's a, it's a rotating door there. Yes, we do lose students sometimes, but more often than not, by the end of the year, we're gaining quite a few. So maybe that could be a part of the thought processes, kind of giving that leeway, maybe to, to all the schools, but certainly to the ones that have a lot of children coming in and out throughout the year. It would definitely help out because I, I know our numbers are very high already at this time.
Yep.
And that's, that's, you know, we know, we can gauge when our numbers are already in the 70s for registration at this time of the year, we know that we will definitely be at 22 when we start in September. I mean, that's just a given, just if you look at the patterns.
Yeah, we look at historical data and summer registrants, but in your building, it's even getting harder to predict.
Correct.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And to the point that was just made, if anybody out there is listening, if you're new to the community, please do not wait till August to register your kids for school. This year, more than ever, it's important that we have an idea of how many new kids are coming into our school district so that we could plan appropriately.
Yes, please.
Are we still cutting off at August 1st?
Yep.
Yeah.
Well, we'll see. I'll come to the board if I, if I feel we, we need to make some considerations.
Yeah. I mean, historically, we have, have always, you know, finally reviewed the numbers as of Octo, as of August 1st in terms of, you know, the number of children in each class. So, you know, we will do that again this year. And hopefully, we'll be able to do anything, you know, do something about any, you know, large aberrations in our class-size formula. But we all care very much about the class sizes in our schools, especially with our youngest. So we hear you. Thank you for coming up. Okay, any more comments?
I have a comment.
Yes.
Actually, I have a report. On the weekend of May 3rd, 4th, and 5th, I attended a visionary leadership weekend, which was sponsored by Dell Technologies and the Microsoft Corporation for the New Jersey School Board Association. It was an intensive training weekend for leadership, and it was well worth going to. I waited until now to explain this because it's not a committee report for the board, but it reflects more of my vision as a leader. And during the weekend, we focused on student achievement, which is very important to me, having been a teacher in the district, social and emotional change through technology, which was very eye-opening and very informative. Hopefully, we'll get to use some of those things in our communications committee, excuse me, improving the effectiveness of our committees, a review of parliamentary procedures, and building community partnerships. And when we broke into small groups about those building community partnerships, that's something I feel that Hillsborough needs to work on, establishing a better working relationship. The Township Committee, excuse me, the Township Committee, the Board of Education, Parks and Rec Department, Planning Board, and the Environmental Commission should all be working together with a vision for the direction that best prepares our township for the future. About planning and visionary leadership, the goals of the stakeholders in Hillsborough should be making the community the best that it can be for its students, parents, residents who are living here but don't have school-age children, and senior citizens, many of whom have lived there, here their whole lifetime. Our community should provide small business opportunities for services that are needed in the community. We're 54 square miles, one of the largest communities represented at this leadership conference. And our growing population probably, we're due for a census soon, but is probably near 40,000 residents at this point. Maybe that would mean we have to provide a service like a jitney-type service for residents to provide safer means for them getting from point A to point B within the town without a car. And we have many people I see riding their bikes on 206. It's not safe. We don't have continuous bike paths or sidewalks through the township yet. And so establishing all of these opportunities for the residents to bond together, we need to maybe create volunteer efforts that would help us in that respect. Or even providing more cultural and performing arts events in town. We should be striving to make Hillsborough a more sustainable community, not just through its resources like water, which we have plenty of during the rainy season, or the soil conservation, but, or recycling for that event effort. But through avenues of revenue that we can use to, and that needs to be explored. With the current 656 districts in the state of New Jersey, we are bound to be overlooked for our fair share of revenue when prioritized with others in the state for needs. This is a problem. We never talk amongst our groups unless we're talking money. There are other things that matter.
Absolutely.
About communication, we need to be more transparent through reliable sources of media and communication. An action item by the Board of Ed to reestablish the work of the Communications Committee is now taking place to report to the community, and that is proceeding and going forward. During that weekend session, I was very disappointed that Hillsborough was an example of what not to do. Listening to 101.5 as the public across the state was doused with commentary from even the mayor chiming in, I was embarrassed for our community when I was sitting at a table with people from across the state. Was not a good example. With that said, not only was I in disbelief at some of the comments that other board members from across the state perceived to have heard, there were statements that need problem-solving and solutions. So that began our discussion in small group. And I, I just was beside myself at some point because all the primary students that I have taught in Hillsborough Township all know that their first life skills lesson was communicated to them that if you don't have something nice to say, or in this case, positive, then don't say anything at all because you must find a way to fix that which is wrong and do that through cooperation and collaboration. So yes, there's freedom of speech, yes, but don't spread hearsay or popular social media topics unless you know all the facts and you're prepared to provide a viable solution. Thank you.
Thank you, Ann. I really think that that, that weekend was wonderful. And as you said, we will be having our communication meeting.
Yes.
In another week. I look forward to it, and thank you for bringing back the materials and sharing it with us. That's a perfect example of what people can do with a good training opportunity, sharing it with other members of the board and bringing it forward. And after we had our multi-hour conversation about all this, two things came up that I'd also like to work on with the Communication Committee. I was very surprised, my stepson provided to me an email he got from his graduating class, which is having their 25th reunion this year, and they were looking for 15 kids. They had email addresses of everybody but 15 kids in his graduating class. I find that amazing. And I really think that we should be tapping into our alumni networks because many of our alumni are very successful people. And they can certainly, you know, be motivated to come back to their old high school and talk and, you know, talk to the students or provide other leadership opportunities, certainly career information and, you know, various other things. The other conversation I had was with a leader of the Hillsborough Education Foundation, which is something I need, I really and truly believe we need to get going. We used to have a foundation that provided teacher grants and various programs. They've gotten to the point where they offer a couple of scholarships a year, and I think we need to get that revitalized, particularly given, you know, the financial situation that we're in. And I think there are out there, I think there are people out there who would be very interested and willing to support our schools, and we need to cultivate them. I mean, it's been very, very hard. We have very limited opportunities to do that, but those are two things that I think we could get going quickly. But thank you very much for your report. Appreciate your positivity all the time. And I see we have some more speakers.
Judy, before we, Judy, can I just, one, really quick, thank you, Ann, very much for the report. I just wanted to comment to the public that this leadership weekend was at no cost to the Hillsborough Township School Board.
Correct.
It was funded from the Educational Leadership Foundation. Just wanted to let folks know that.
Correct. Thank you for bringing that out. Yes, ma'am?
Hi. Elena Messeri, Hillsborough Education Association, teacher at Hillsborough High School. I just wanted to sort of echo Ms. Harris's sentiments. Many months back, I introduced Borough Pride to this Board of Ed, and that, that is the purpose of Borough Pride. And the Hillsborough Education Association stands ready to partner with everybody and anybody to bring Hillsborough back into the forefront and restore its reputation to the great place that it is. So I welcome any conversations with any board members on how to further this initiative. Mayor Delkor, thank you for taking the time at Township Committee meeting in early March to celebrate and introduce the initiative to the community. There's window clings everywhere. There's magnets everywhere. T-shirts are on their way out. So we stand ready to partner with you, and we hope that you take us up on that. Thank you.
We're happy to work with you on that. Last call for public comment? Okay, on to the action agenda.
Thank you, Madam President. I ask for the Board's consideration of the following motions under the area of education to approve travel-related expenses, the HIB determination list, approval of novels as reported out of education, as well as a revised curriculum, approve ELL summer program staff, and that's all.
Okay. You good?
Yep.
Okay, I will take a motion and a second.
So moved.
For items 11-1 through 11-5.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Okay, any questions or comments on the education agenda? Okay, roll call.
Sure. Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Dr. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Eldridge Howard?
Yes.
Ms. Maroon?
Yes.
Mr. Pultifer?
Yes.
Dr. Sasan?
Yes.
Ms. Stats?
Yes.
Ms. Trujillo?
Yes.
And Ms. Haas?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. I ask for the Board's consideration of the following motions that I'm recommending under the area of human resources, to recommend the retirements of Maribel Morocomia, who is our speech and language therapist over at Wood Fern, who has been with the district since 2003. Pam Peterson, reach teacher currently at Wood Fern, not at Autton Road. She's been with us since 1981. Mary Beth Schwartz, ASI teacher at Autton Road, who has been with us since 1987. And Ralph Smith, our Latin teacher at the high school, who has been with us since 2003. And we thank all of them for their service to the community and to their students. Also to approve resignations as listed, revise leaves of absences, approve the contract change, transfers and change in assignments for next year, approve leaves of absence for next year, extra period coverage, the preapproval as well as approval for extra period coverage, student teachers for next year, and the renewals of non-tenure certificated staff, and the renewal of non-tenured HPSA staff, the renewal of non-tenured unaffiliated administrators, the approval and renewal of instructional assistants for next year, and the approve, the approval of the renewal of lunch aids. Also to approve extended school year program, approve summer athletic programs.
Okay. I will take a motion for items 12.1 through 12.15.
So moved.
Thanks, Chris.
Second.
Thanks, Joyce. Any questions or comments on the HR agenda? Roll call.
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Dr. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Eldridge Howard?
Yes.
Ms. Maroon?
Yes.
Mr. Pultifer?
Yes.
Dr. Sasan?
Yes.
Ms. Stats?
Yes.
Ms. Trujillo?
Yes.
And Ms. Haas?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. I recommend for the Board's consideration the following motions under the area of operations, to approve the participation in the coordinated transportation agreement for next school year, out-of-district placements to ward the bid for waste proposal as reported out by Mr. Gillette.
Okay, I'll take a motion and second for items 13-1 through 13-3.
So moved.
Thank you, Chris.
Second. Thank you, Lisa.
All right. Any comments or questions about the operations?
Actually, I actually do have a question.
Can you answer yourself a question?
Yeah, I'm asking myself a question. We don't typically discuss the out-of-district placements during Operations Committee, so I did have a question about that one. So it's, the out-of-district placement for this student is $92,000. It says prorated, so that's not the part-year amount, the 92,000, I hope.
That's the, that's the annual tuition.
Okay, still, even still, that doesn't include, is there transportation involved at this?
Yes, but it does not include transportation.
Yeah. This is, all right, this is just our costs, everyone. Everyone wonders what our costs are. This is one student who needs this.
Right.
Who absolutely needs this for, it's going to be like $100,000 with, with transportation or whatnot.
More with transportation.
More than that. Because sometimes they charge for other special.
Related services.
Related services.
Yeah.
Right? That's not always included with the 92,000.
Yeah.
Okay. This is just, this is just one, this is just one. All right.
Hopefully, we'll be talking about this at Legislative Day. I mean, this is an item that's on the legislative calendar right now, in addition to the special education funding issues that our district has outlined before. But thank you for bringing that to everybody's attention.
That's one of 60.
Yeah, I think it's around 60. And I sometimes mention that, like, many years ago, when I first got on the board, maybe about 12 or so years ago, that we, you know, we had executive session, we discussed the student that was going to go to, I don't know, Virginia or somewhere, and they're going to ride horses, and room and board was included. It was a whole thing for about $50,000, all-in, for this student. And we were like, $50,000? And we were like, $50,000? That's incredible. We had a half, a half hour about it in executive session. There were horses, and they got to live there, you know? Now, it's, now it's $100,000. Costs are really just astronomical, but of course, it's what these kids need, just the costs are so astronomical.
Yeah. And while, you know, while schools are heavily regulated by the state, there are no caps for any of these schools. They can hire whoever they want, they can charge whatever they want, and it's just a very difficult thing to deal with. But, you know, we've got to do for the kids what needs to be done for the kids, and it's a terrible dilemma. But anyway.
Roll call.
We're good.
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Dr. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Eldridge Howard?
Yes.
Ms. Maroon?
Yes.
Mr. Pulsifer?
Yes.
Dr. Sasan?
Yes.
Ms. Stats?
Yes.
Ms. Trujillo?
Yes.
And Ms. Haas?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay. Informational?
Yeah, just informational items are available for the board's review. And are we ready to open up second public commentary, Madam President?
Okay. Please note that our enrollment's gone up again. Every month, we're noticing increases in our enrollment and certainly large increases from last year. And all the other reports, I assume, were to everybody's satisfaction. And now, we have our second public comment. Are there any further comments on old business? Did you want to say something?
I just wanted to congratulate our girls softball team for winning the county championship.
Yes.
I look forward to seeing what they do at state. And I know the baseball team has a game on the 16th, which I think is Thursday, after, and they have a winning streak going, and I think lacrosse is doing well. I mean, this is a strong season for Hillsborough sports, so I'm hoping we can maybe get them to come to a board meeting so we can congratulate them.
Sure.
Great, thanks.
And just to highlight, Coach Ione's 400th win occurred during this season. We actually had a student, Carly Manco, chalked up her 100th career hit.
Yep.
On top of that.
And there's some great social media, like Hillsborough Borough Sports. I mean, there's three or four different accounts that I follow on Twitter, and it's great to see everything.
Yeah, now I see those pictures, too.
I hope to see them beforehand so I can actually go to a game, but I always see the after with the reporting, but it's always nice to see.
Okay, thank you for bringing that out. Is there any other comments? I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.